How much was it? Did you slip first?
Isn't that crazy? Yeah, yeah, we're spoiled, aren't we? Good evening and welcome to the Lawrence City Council meeting. This is your, I'm sorry, the Ordinance Intergovernmental Relations Committee meeting. Today's Tuesday, April twenty-second. Note that this meeting is being conducted in a hybrid and in digital platforms, which include this. Pursuant to Chapter Twenty of the Acts of Twenty Twenty-Two, this meeting of the Ordinance Committee is being conducted both in person and via remote participation. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to or view this meeting while in progress be either a attending person or use the following access locations, including the Facebook Lawrence City Council page and the YouTube Lawrence City Council page. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Fidelina Santiago.
Present.
Counselor Gregory Del Rosario.
Present.
Vice Chair Selena Reyes.
Present.
And Chairman Mark Laplan.
Present.
Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Evening, councilors. This is my favorite time of the year because we have five Tuesdays this year. We have an extra week, right? That's a good thing, right? We do love it. So we're going to take care of the people's business as expediently as we can. And we're going to go if it's okay. I went through the crowd and I was able to figure out who is here for what items, so I have them marked here. So if it's all right, I'll just go in that order. The first group on here is Document One Forty-two Twenty-five. This is a city employee disclosure of a conflict, Joellei Chalas. Ms. Chalas, welcome.
Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Joellei Chala. I live on Fort Tugro Avenue, Lawrence, Ma, and I'm a resident of Lawrence. I'm here because I am employee of the City of Lawrence through the Lawrence Public District School, but I also have my solo practice, which I consult. So I applied for a contract with the Lawrence Police Department and I was able to obtain it, but I want to do a disclosure in front of the City Council.
So thank you. So I think the matter before us, it's not an approval, it's not a disapproval. It's an acceptance of a disclosure. So we understand and it's made public to us and at the full council that there is a potential conflict, but she's disclosing that. So, and that's the guidance that's given by the Ethics Commission.
Correct.
So I'll open it up to any questions that you might have. If there aren't any questions, I would just encourage there to be a motion to send this up to the full council as a committee report.
Motion to send on the full council as a community report?
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Del Rosario, seconded by Counselor Santiago. Discussion. See no discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Please, we have our next meeting. The first Tuesday in May, I don't remember the date. It was like the fifth or sixth or something?
The sixth.
Sixth, thank you. So the sixth, so please come that day as well. I don't expect there to be a lot of discussion about this, but it's good for you to be here.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question if you're counsel. Does that mean that it's not approval?
Come speak, come speak to Mike.
Does that mean it's not approval or I just need to come back and be with all the members to be present?
You, 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 well, we're going to have a vote of a full council. We're just a committee.
Okay.
And so we're the first step of the process. The next step is going to be at the full council. We're all nine of us will have an opportunity to take a vote to accept and do understand that you have this disclosure. That disclosure, right? There may be questions, there may not be questions. Because if you just say what your conflict is, you're working for the school department, you look to work for the, for the, for the police department, right? And so because of that, we need to know that. And it's in the file, that's it.
Okay.
So show up, that's it. Okay, you're welcome. Next is One Forty-three Twenty-five, three-on-three basketball tournament, scholarship fundraiser at Nina's Grito Park and the courts at forty-nine Brook Street at seven a.m. to three p.m., June seventh. Are you Elvis?
Yes.
Perfect. You're, you're my list. So go ahead, Elvis. What do we need to know about this?
All right, my name is Elvis Cabral. I'm the Director of Movement City Lawrence Community Works. This is our third.
Third?
Basketball tournament in name of Armin Hayid. Is, we started this because we wanted to get more funding for our scholarships as our program continued to grow and we had more alumni. We wanted to make sure we supported them after the program. So as more alumni graduate, we put the three-on-three tournament, which is something Armin Hayid liked to do, and we put a tournament around it. We invite all the way to eighth graders bracket, and then we have brackets for high schoolers. And yeah, last year we did pretty good. We got pretty good numbers and we hope that we could continue expanding. And we just love also activating that park in Brook Street. I think it's very important. It's right there by my program. We try to use it every summer, but sometimes it's hard for us to access it. We just like love activating that corner of Lawrence. I think it's very important, especially because a lot of our kids from our program come from those homes around that park.
Any questions? Counselor Del Rosario.
For you, Chair. I had the pleasure to run by last year. I went earlier and I was amazed how clean the park was as you guys prepared. Then I went, I would say half an hour later and the tournament was already over. But then I went to, to the Community Works and it was a great celebration, great party. So I mean, I like the way you guys cleaned the park before and then after. It was extremely clean, so I, I'm in full support of this event.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments? Counselor, Vice Chair.
You can come because I know the passion, dedication, commitment you have for our community. So I want to say thank you for that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I got a couple.
Yeah.
Questions. So the first question is, I always struggle. The biggest one here is, is make sure there's no conflict for that location. Have you talked to Recreation?
Yeah, we did. Today, earlier today.
Today?
Yeah, we went to his office, yeah.
Did we get an email from them today saying this is clear? Do you have something from them written?
They didn't give me, he said it was all said, that all I needed was show up here and I'll be fine. But he didn't give me a printout or anything. We did ask, but we didn't get it.
Yeah, I, I needed to speak with them a little bit more about that. It'd be good for you to have a walk away with something in your hand.
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be the best thing. Do we, do we have anything on there? I, I trust you, by the way. It's just, if we start saying, I like the way you look and you're fantastic, and we're going to say yes, but the next group, we're not, we're going to, so we have to kind of be consistent about this.
No, I understand, yeah.
So I, I firmly believe this is probably okay, so I would recommend we do that. But one more, before we do that, what time is the, are the events that you have?
At the park specifically?
Yeah.
Ten to, ten to one? Ten to one, we're holding the basketball tournament itself. I think we asked for about an hour early just to make sure we could set up, clean up if anything, and then a couple of hours after so we could, again, clean up the park.
So let me just say this, and I don't think it's going to be applicable here.
Yeah.
But we learn from our mistakes. And last year, we granted a group to have a basketball event. It took place at night. And what happened was, and you councilors may remember this, there were people, it was a good event, good people, great cause, but we had outsiders that were coming in and their intent was to cause problems. So I think part of it had to do with drinking, part of it had to do with the evening.
Yeah.
And hot nights and all the other stuff. So I don't think that's the sense here. But I just, again, out of fairness, what kind of, what is the age group of the, of the individuals that are going to be playing?
Well, we're talking about maybe thirteen, twelve to high schoolers, so to eighteen maybe. We do have Lawrence Police is going to be present in our, in our tournament. So they're going to come in and out. We are already clear with him, with them.
Who's going to be at the tournament?
The Lawrence Police.
LPD?
Yeah, yeah, LPD, yeah.
You're going to have them there?
Yeah, we'll have them there.
Okay.
Yeah, they've already said yes.
Oh, super. So what I, what I would look for is this, I would encourage us to send it with a favorable recommendation pending, pending. Get some documentation, get something written from them, give it to one of us, send an email.
Okay.
Give it to the clerk. Bring it, bring it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Tuesday night, just have it in your hand.
Yeah.
Make copies. That's the best thing.
Okay.
So that's what we're looking for.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Motion to send on the full council a favorable recommendation pending clearing from the Recreation Department.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Santiago, seconded by Vice Chair Reyes. Any further discussion? See none, I'll call the question.
No, motion to follow Del Rosario.
Did I say, what did I say?
Santiago.
Counselor Del Rosario, seconded by Vice Chair Reyes. Sorry. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no, the ayes have it. They're not going to put me on the spot, Counselor. I mean, I've been doing this long enough. All right, so that's favorable.
Yeah, I don't know.
Come Tuesday.
Okay.
Not this Tuesday, but the sixth, I'm going to say, right?
The sixth, and just bring paperwork, son.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you guys represent the Fiesta de Barrio?
Yes.
All right, let's not go away. Stick around for that one. All right, One Forty-four Twenty-five. This is Fiesta de Barrio Park, Spray Park?
Yes, Splash Park.
Is that, is that the name of the park?
Yes.
We, we gave it a name?
That park we did it last year, National Night Out.
We, we gave it a name? Can we vote on that?
Through this park, we do Fiesta de Barrio for the last long time.
Yeah.
It's the unofficial name. All right, that's fine. I can play along. Okay, so you're here. It's on June seventh. Same thing, did you get clearance from Recreation?
Yes, yes, both, both.
It was today they sealed?
Yeah, today we cleared both of them.
You have a drill, okay. Any other questions?
Motion to send on the full council. Oh, I'm sorry.
Counselor. Who had a question? Counselor Santiago, please.
What mean the Fiesta de Barrio, what mean the activity? What do you planning to do that day? And we can have a little more information to pray all the neighbor over there because I live in Prospect.
Okay.
The activity in the park and I got a trouble to make the address from this park because Chair Laplan didn't remind the park. Many people doesn't remind that. And, and I encourage to organization make more activity over there because that's a nice park.
Yeah. No, I hundred percent agree. I think part of what we're doing is we want to activate that corner of Lawrence because it's a corner that has a lot of youth. It's, it's sometimes, it could be dangerous, but also there's a lot of youth don't, don't mind, they just come outside and want activity. So we're, we want to activate that corner. Part of it is the Fiesta de Barrio, which is inviting all the neighbors from that area to come. We have food, we're doing Zumba, we have other community leaders that are going to set tables, other programs are going to set tables as well, so we're going to share with them information. We're going to have activities for kids. We want to do activities for adults. It's actually something we want to focus on because we want you to be able to have fun yourself, like not just play with the kids or, you know, with the toys, what the kids are doing. My program, Movement City, is going to be performing as well. So it's kind of like, it's a little bit of everything, a little bit of everything, and every year it gets better and better and better. We give free backpacks as well. It's one of the things that we do in that space. And it's entire L C W just letting the community know that we're there and we want to be able to have access to y'all and for you to have fun in our corner of the, of the space. Oh, okay. All right, I'm going to keep my eye on you this time.
Another question? Yeah. And how do you plan to make, to spread that information for the neighborhood?
Yeah, so what we've done in the past, we do a lot of door knocking in that same neighborhood. And we send emails to all of our membership, save the date and also the date of the flyer. So that's mainly what we do. I mean, we pass it to our kids, the kids take it to their schools, they share it with their families. We have a lot of people coming in and out of the building. So again, our, our main focus is the neighborhood area, but we try to send as many emails and I'll, I'll be more than happy to send to everybody here an email for that and share the flyer when I come back as well.
Thank you. Good recommendation that, that can work.
Yeah.
To spray the flyer after the kids in Parkton School or, or Rolling School. When they get out, you can, you can give it to them or the mom.
Yeah, absolutely. That's, we're definitely trying to reach out as far as we can and those are still our areas. We had a bunch of kids in our program from, from those schools.
All right.
So yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
So we're all set?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Thank you so much.
See you Tuesday, two weeks from now. All right, next is Document One Twenty-seven.
We didn't, no?
There was no motion?
Motion to send with favorable recommendations.
Second.
Vice Chair made the recommendation, seconded by Counselor Santiago. Any further discussion? See none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. One Twenty-seven Twenty-five, Resident Parking, Hable Street between Jackson and Newberry Street. Here we go. Hi, your name?
Hi, yes, my name is Yerona Eli-Parra. And I am here to see if we can get permit parking sticker from, I live on one sixteen Hable Street. And I'm trying to see if we can get it from Jackson Street all the way to Newberry Street. But if we can extend it all the way to Union Street, will be better on Hable Street.
Okay, questions? One Twenty-seven Twenty-five, this is for April first. It's April first, but it's in our packet. And I have the, we should all have it. It's in, it's in our regular, just look it up in the regular section. One Twenty-seven Twenty-five, right, so we have it here. Yep. Do we know what district that's in? Anybody? Is it B?
B.
So while my colleagues are, unless you got a question or a comment? No? Okay, so what we're going to typically do is we're going to send this to the police department for, for their review. They're going to come back. Some of the things they're going to be looking for are driveways and see what kind of parking there is there. Is it narrow? I, I'm not familiar with that street necessarily, so they're going to double check and take a look at it. They're going to have this, they may give you a call because they've got your number here, so you might get a call from them, maybe looking for more information.
Okay.
But they do a lot of this stuff as well, with Google Satellite imagery and take a look around, so you may or may not see them.
Okay.
So we'll see what they come up with for a response. It usually takes them, usually about a month. I would say that's probably the ballpark. I wouldn't expect them to come before then. And this is, just so you're aware, it's your first time before us, I believe, right?
Yeah, the first time, yeah.
Yeah, so what happens, this is a committee, and just so you're understanding the process, it goes from here, then it goes to, depending on what we've discussed.
Yeah.
We'll make some sort of recommendation. It'll go before the full council. And then at that point, we're going to order a public hearing. What you're actually looking for is a changing of the law. And when we change the law, we need to make sure people have an opportunity to speak on it, the public. So we have to order a public hearing so people can speak on it. So that's the process and the following public meeting or two after that. So we're still maybe four to six weeks out at the earliest on something like this.
Okay, and then who should I give this to? They told me to see if I can.
You can give that to us.
Okay.
That's your petition of people who are supporting it?
Yes.
Okay. Pardon me?
There's never parking.
There's never?
Any time of the day, yeah, there's never parking. I have three kids. That I have to walk two, three blocks just to get home. There's times when I get home and there's no parking and I have to wait like an hour just to find a parking in my car. There's times, you know, when I go grocery shopping and I have to walk two, three blocks back and forth a couple of times a day just to get the groceries up at my house.
So we appreciate this, we'll, we'll hear back. This is becoming a more of a hot button issue for all of the city councilors because we're hearing a lot of this.
Yeah.
And I just, I just want you to understand that we're going to try to work on this, but also that I think ultimately, this is, if, if we go forward with it, this is a bit premature, but if this is adopted, it may be just a short-term fix. It's not a long-term fix because more and more people are moving into our city, maybe more and more people may be getting cars on your street.
Yeah.
And there's only so much space.
Yeah.
And the cars will, and there may be a time soon that you'll have a resident parking sticker and still not be able to park on your street because everybody else has got a resident parking sticker. So I just want to kind of manage expectations a little bit to, a couple of years down the road, like, why can't I find a place? I thought we had this fixed and I can't find a parking space, just so you're aware, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
But we'll work on it, we'll see what we can get.
Okay, can you guys just note there, you see if, to see if maybe we can extend it to Union Street instead of Newberry Street?
So yeah, so you, so say it again and we'll, we'll, I'll send that to the police department. So you want it from where?
From Hable Street, oh, no, I'm sorry, from Jackson Street.
From Jackson to where?
To Union Street.
Jackson to Union. So we're looking for an amendment of this, amendment to this. Hable Street between Jackson and Union Street. Is there someone who's willing to issue that amendment?
So move.
Motion made by Counselor Del Rosario, seconded by Vice Chair Reyes. Any further discussion on the amendment? Because that's what we're going to be asking the police department to review. See none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Is there a motion before us now to send this to the police department?
Motion to send on the police department for review?
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Del Rosario, seconded by Counselor Santiago. Discussion.
I would like to say, yeah. Recommend that for you, you, or Counselor, a large and one for your district. You can get any information about your item through them as well.
Okay.
But you are interested, here is bad. Watch out, you can represent you.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Right.
Have a good night.
Have a good night. The next is One Twenty-nine Twenty-five, a one-year anniversary celebration, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, on Caprenon Common.
Hello. I'm, hi, I'm Annie Man Seabom, the owner of Soil Food Truck. And we have our one-year anniversary on July thirteenth. And I'm here because I'm interested in getting a special permit to be able to put some tables out in front of my truck. I'm planning on having like a little event and having like a paint-your-own-mug, so I would need some tables.
You'll be providing your own tables?
Yes, everything.
Gotcha, okay. Any questions? Did you, you may have already heard a little bit, have you gotten, is there any conflicts with the Recreation Department on that day? Have you got the okay from them?
Um, no, I don't.
Have you talked to Recreation Department? Have you talked to the Recreation Department?
No.
No, you haven't, okay. It's important that you do that. I'll tell you why, just because what we don't want to do is have this situation where there's already been another organization that has, has received a permit to be at that spot. We don't want to double book something. It doesn't bode well, it doesn't help anybody out.
Okay.
It would be very helpful. When are you looking for this?
July thirteenth, that's a Sunday.
We do have some time, right? We're in, we're in April right now. So would you please go to the Recreation Department?
Sure.
You heard what we mentioned before. Get something from them saying that this date is clear, it's good, and send that to us. What we can do, councilors, is we can deal with it here. I don't know if we need her back if she gets that over to us, but is there any questions we may want to have now, while she's with us?
Through you, Counselor.
Yeah.
I seen the truck, right? So you don't need the whole park, right? You might, you might using that little square where you park the truck and you do the grass, what the grass is, and that's where you're going to put the table, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay.
They probably not even going to use, how many tables are you planning to put?
Four, to be exact.
Yeah, they're not even planning to, I mean, they're not taking the whole, it's not even a third of, of the park that they're going to use.
But we're trying to be consistent, yeah, but it's a good point.
Yeah, make sure that there's nothing going on, there might be a conflict and that would be obviously clear.
Any other questions? I just have one more if there isn't any others. So your truck is going to stay on the street?
Yes.
Okay, so you're not putting that on the comment?
No.
Okay, all right. I'm looking for a motion to table it at this matter and getting that documentation to us. You don't need to be here, just get it to us.
Sounds good.
We do have some time, so we don't need to rush this and deal with it at the next council meeting. You have it in July. And so if you got it, we have time.
Okay, all right.
So I'm looking for, so get that to us.
Okay.
And you can just show up in a few weeks, or if you make it easier on yourself, just email it. You have our email addresses?
No.
You can get it, we're easy to find.
Okay.
Online. Do you want to give it? You give it to the city clerk and you can give it to me.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to table?
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Del Rosario, seconded by Vice Chair Reyes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. That car's six years old. Just saving tax payer money. Anniversary. All right, we're moving. Uh, National Grid, we've got One Thirty-four Twenty-five, relocate one. What does the S stand for again?
Solely.
Solely?
Solely owned. And J O is jointly owned.
Okay, solely and jointly. All right, so One Thirty-four Twenty-five. What do you got going?
Vazna Ang, eleven oh one Tempesta Street, National Grid. Uh, yeah, due to the D O T project that's happening, happening on the area of Amesbury Street, National Grid is requesting the petition approval from the city to relocate Solely Own Pole thirteen zero one. I believe it's on Amesbury and Methuen Street, the intersection at the corner.
See a schematic on here on Newberry. Is this where it's going to be going? You're relocating, are you moving it?
Yes.
To relocate, where is it now?
Depending what schematic you're looking at. Because this, this job had like four different petitions, so.
Okay.
Definitely.
So I have it, it's called P one three zero one.
Yep.
It's on, at the intersection of Amesbury and Methuen.
Yep.
And it's number two thirty-five is listed.
Correct, yep.
Is that where it's going to go?
Uh, well, there's one there that's already existing and we're just trying to move it, I believe it's west five feet.
Five feet, that's why there's not a lot of, so I see what you're doing there.
Because the one, the pole that, that is there now, it's anchored to a building across the street, so we want to remove that, so it's anchored on the public way.
Okay. Are there any questions? We have to order a public hearing on this, right? Do we order a public, do we order a public hearing on the J O pole and the S O pole, okay? Looking for a, a motion or a comment, something?
A motion to send to the full council in order of a public hearing.
Motion made by Vice Chair, seconded by Counselor Santiago. Discussion. See none, I'll call the, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Okay, you've got, you've got the next one, which is Document One Thirty-five Twenty-five. That's three-nothing vote on that. We got that? Okay. Relocate two J O poles on Amesbury Street.
Yes, National Grid is seeking the town's, the city's approval to relocate Pole thirty-two, thirty-one and thirty fifty-eight. Both of the poles will be moving south approximately seven feet due to the new D O T widening of the street project, I believe.
Okay. Questions, comments, motions?
Motion to send with favorable recommendation to the full council in order of a public hearing.
Motion made by Vice Chair Reyes, seconded by Counselor Santiago. Discussion. See none, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, great, thank you very much. I just looked under new business. I see all the taxi cabs are still on here. They should not be on our agenda. Okay, here's. All right, let's, who else is here? Oh, one forty-six, that's right. We have, how did I miss you, Angelo? Come on up. You were here speaking. I bypassed you and I apologize for that. Could have got you out a few minutes earlier.
It's all right, I love my city councilor.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead.
So I'm here, um, just on behalf of myself, Angelo Di Ammanni, is to disclose the fact that I work on multiple boards and commissions. I do the minutes for different boards. These boards are the airport commission, the Lawrence Disability Commission, and now the cemetery, um, board, or I'm not sure if it's a board or a commission, but I do the minutes for those different boards. If, you know, I was told that I have to come here and disclose that. I'm not sure if there's anything, any questions you guys have, I'm willing to answer them. Any questions about my process or what?
But we, you don't have to do it all over again, we heard, we, we all heard you, yep.
Hello?
Nope.
Who's it again? Hello?
This is, uh, am I agreeing or no?
No, no, it's never really. Hello, hello?
No, just one. Don't, don't agree, man, better.
Hello? So, can you guys?
We, no, we got it, we heard you. So, um, any questions on this? Do you understand what, what we're going to be doing on your? So this is essentially, I'm sure you've heard the previous individual, so it's a disclosure. Uh, ethics commission, so you don't get in any trouble, requires that you make sure that we are aware of this and we're the governing body, so the full council is. So, um, you're, you're giving us notice. You're just letting us know, so.
For the record, he said on the green.
Okay, so, um, so there we go. So you, you'll need to come back in three weeks, but I'm looking for a motion for a committee report to sign it on up. You just noticed, so. Is there a motion to send this up to the full council with a favorable recommendation? I'm sorry, with a committee, as a committee report, I apologize. Committee report. Made by Counselor Del Rosario, seconded by Vice Chair Reyes. Any further discussion, questions?
Uh, Counselor La Plan, I just wonder, when is the next meeting that I have to show up?
May sixth.
May sixth, okay, same time?
Seven, well.
Hopefully.
Our meetings are supposed to start at seven, I can't promise that always happens, but.
Fair enough.
That's the goal.
Thank you, counselors, have a great rest of your evening.
We're about to vote here, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, you're good.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we'll see you in a couple of weeks. All right.
Oh, we have one more either?
Sure. You're for Samana Hispana, are you together?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that one right now. So, um, there's no objection, we're going to take document number one thirty-one, twenty-five. Fiesta shows Samana Hispana, June eighth through June sixteenth. Seeing no objections, welcome back.
Thank you.
How are you? Is it Rosario or Lopez? I want to make sure.
Lopez.
Lopez, thank you. Okay, so the last time we tabled it.
Yes.
Uh, we had discussions regarding recreation, so bring us up to speed. What's, since we've last met, what else do we need to know about this?
Nothing else. I even spoke with Martha this afternoon and she said that everything was okay back when I came last Tuesday. That she didn't know why you guys didn't go through with it. That's what she told me today. So I'm here again.
Okay. Uh, and Mr. Flynn, is he, is you, are you still working with him?
Yes.
Yes, he is. And he's not, he's not here outside either, okay? Um. So counselors, there is a request. The comment is free that weekend. I got one more question for you, or maybe two more.
Yeah.
We, this is for the, for carnivals on the common for those dates. Just so I'm double checking myself. The vote that we took last week was for the fest, the festival.
For the festival.
There were, there, there's no rides associated with that, is there? Carnival rides associated with the vote that we took place last, the, last, I just want to hear that.
Yeah. This was the second piece of.
But there's no rides, the vote that we took had no carnival rides associated, it was just the festival without the carnival rides?
Yes.
Okay, okay. The other question I have is, are, your funding source, um, I mean, I've heard, and, and again, I'm going to ask you publicly, are you receiving any city monies for, for this, for the Samana Hispana this year?
We have received that one that it, that we applied for, which was twenty twenty-two, I think it was, and then it was to be given twenty twenty-three. It hasn't been given to us, yes. I mean, yet, but yes.
So you're going to get, how much money is a city providing to you?
Fifty thousand.
You're getting fifty thousand through, and that's the ARPA? Is that, that's what I'm hearing, is that's true? So just fifty thousand and it's ARPA monies?
Yes.
Okay, no other city money, it's just that? Okay, and you've never, this is your first time getting that kind of, well?
Yes.
Money from the city?
Yes.
Okay. And how much of the, how much of a, um, of an impact is that funding? Fifty thousand, sounds like an awful lot of money, but you can tell me. Is that, is that ten percent of the, what's required? Is it seventy-five percent? How much of the budget is that? How helpful is that to you?
The whole festival itself, it'll be, just the police bill is about sixty thousand. Just the police. This is without the stage, which is another twenty-five thousand. This is about, um, everything else, the toilets, the, everything else that we bring to the park, yes. So the, I'll say that that festival goes around over a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. So you've got, you've got fifty thousand.
Mm-hmm.
So that's about half of the cost that you're getting, that normally you would have to pick up the whole hundred thousand. This year you have to pick up less money.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's good to know. Um. So I'm not sure, I, I don't want to monopolize this conversation. Are there any, I've got more questions, but I'm going to allow my colleagues to ask questions or make comments at this point if they have any. No? Okay. The, um. Have you considered? And if, and I think the answer is yes. Have you considered the park, the parking lot near where Silverio Park is today? I think it's called the Gateway Park and there's, um, park, there's a parking lot there, uh, that would be able to withstand carnival rides. Uh, have you considered that location rather than the common?
Which park is that one?
So it's near the Lawrence General Hospital, ballpark that area, and it's, uh, you know where the, the Silverio Park is?
Miva?
Yeah, where they had, uh, with the Puerto, the Puerto Rican festival last year.
It is Miva.
So, so that location right there, where, where it's, it's kind of out of the way, but it's still in the city, it's very close by to a lot of things. Uh, have that, has that, have you considered that?
We went last year.
Sure.
And, uh, we did a whole, um, the plan and everything. We brought it here to the city, so it was supposed to be done. Then they came back and said, oh, no, 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 no. All those spots are rented through the year, so we can't use it. And we were, they were not even giving us, I'll say, for what we talk and we were spoke about, like, we could fit the beer there and we did a whole thing. And they were giving us like a third of what we got originally of on the first, uh, meeting that we had. It was, um, the people that are running, Fernando, Fernando did the thing with, uh, drum and everything, so we sent, we brought it here to the mayor last year. That was going to be plan eight. And so when they saw everything, they were like, oh, no, we're going to move people in by June, and then it was a whole fiasco and then they said, no, we're not going to use that.
Who said, no, we're not going to use?
Miva. Cause they said they own it. And I know it's a whole thing within the city, if it is yes part of the city, if they haven't paid, I know the whole story. So they said no.
So that's, so you're telling me that's not a city-owned park, that's a Miva-owned parking lot?
Uh, you tell me. That's what they said, that's what they said last year. And then I know it's a whole new conversation now because they haven't paid the city taxes or what it is for twenty years. I know the whole story. But the point was that they said, no, you're not, you guys cannot use it because it's rented.
You guys aren't.
Part, the, only the part in the front where the Puerto Ricans used last year.
That can be used.
Yeah, but then only that part will be okay for the machines, so.
For the machines, okay.
No carnival. And then last year also, which was what I was telling, um, Mr. De Rosario, uh, they gave me the okay for May. I spoke with the person that they had, um, forgot the name, Jacqueline, I think it is. Um, and then she said, oh, no, you never told me that. And they, we had to move the machines back to the cinema. That was last year. Because it was not, there was, you guys were still going back and forth whether it is the city's or it is the state or it is Miva's or it is, I don't know who.
And when you say you guys, you're not talking to council, you're talking who?
Miva.
Miva and you say you guys, who's you guys, the Miva or?
And the city.
And the city meeting, who, DPW, recreation, the mayor's office?
Me, the mayor's office.
The mayor's office?
Yes.
Okay, so what you're suggesting is that there's, well, if I'm understanding you correctly, there, I think there's an established section there where the Puerto Rican group used last year and that still can be used this year.
I don't know if it can be used this year because I even called, left messages, nobody got back to me.
Who are you talking to? Who?
The same per, the same people that I spoke with last year. Let me see if I know who it is.
In, in Miva?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's, it'd be good for us to know.
Niorka. It was Niorka Minicucci, I think it was, that's the number I have. That's the person I was talking to.
Nilka and the last name?
Minicucci.
Oh, Minicucci. That's that Nilka. Yep, I know she is, yep. Christina. Minicucci.
Niorka, I think it's her assistants, that's the person I was talking to.
Okay.
And when we met, all of us, she was there. Niorka was there, Fernando, myself, Mr. Flynn, everybody was there. Last year.
And Rep. Minicucci, gotcha. Those two people from Miva, gotcha. Okay. And so what they're saying to you is that, is that their, Miva owns it?
That was last year.
Right. Last year, they said to you that, that entire space is all owned by Miva?
Mm-hmm.
And that, no. You're, they're, they are not allowing you, your organization to have, to you, for use of that area.
How, it was supposed to be set up with a kiosk, with a beer, with a crowd, everything. So they said, no, 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 you're going to use, once we spoke with them and did the layout and everything.
Yeah.
They were okay, extended to us, we extended to the mayor and everybody. So then when we met in person, uh, they were like, no, 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 you only have this part, which was like a third or so. And so it only could fit the machines, not the crowd, not the beer, nothing, nothing else.
So isn't the issue here, the machines, not necessarily the crowd? What, what, besides the machines, what else is there?
The kiosk.
The kiosk. But the kiosks aren't as intrusive, I don't think, as a machine, the heavy machinery. The kiosk, like, what's in a kiosk? It's, it's like, what's it made out of? It's just a, is like a tent?
Tent.
It's just a tent, so it's not a lot of intrusion. It's not like.
No, 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 it wasn't the intrusion, it was the space that we didn't have.
No, I understand, I understand that, but.
Mm-hmm.
There. The, 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 the section where the parking is, because of the concrete.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the asphalt, that would be a better place clearly for heavy machinery.
I understand.
If there is, um, things like tents or kiosks, they don't necessarily need to be on that parcel. We have a park near there now that I would not want to see any carnival. I wouldn't want to see any rides on Silverio Park. However, it's, they're close to each other. I'm trying to be, I'm trying to think outside the box and see if there's a way that we can, that we can get this, what your needs done, but without being intrusive on some of the public owned properties that we have. So if we have the carnival rides on the asphalt.
Mm-hmm.
And we have your kiosks, without trucks, just the tents and the stuff on the grass, and we expand that, wouldn't that provide more space? Cause you didn't have that space there early last year, did you? I don't think.
Yeah, on the other hand, remember that most of the kiosk that we bring in for the, for this, uh, festival are people from outside. Most of them come from Connecticut, New York, Rhode Island. So they do need like a car or two to park. And Miva was saying, there's no space for, need a car to be on premises. So that's another problem. So those people bring their stuff, their oil, everything. So same thing that the other lady was talking about, parking three, four blocks only for grocery shop. And imagine for all this, uh, big machineries that they're going to cook the food in. So how is that going to be possible? When we presented that to Miva, they were like, oh, no, nobody can park here. That was another problem. Which, when we are on the common, they can park around, not inside the park, and we understand that.
So, counsel, I, I, I think I know where I'm going with this. I, I don't know what my call is, I'll, I'll be candid. To me, so I'm try, I've been, you've known my history on this issue.
I don't.
I voted for it several times. I haven't always voted for it on the common, but every time there was a yes vote on the common, it was with the understanding, this is the last year. This is the last year. And it reminds me of the old Charlie Brown, where, where the ball is hiked and Charlie Brown kicks it and Lucy pulls the ball up in the air and Charlie Brown goes spinning? I keep, I'm the Charlie Brown character here. I'm going to go kick the ball and I'm going to miss it and I'm going to be falling down again because we're moving, we're moving it again.
Mm-hmm.[1511.13]
I, I brought this as well, just, because I, someone brought this to my attention. This is an article from page back in 2018, that shows, uh, the carnival after it left, and the impact it had after we spent $2.2 million on, on, on fixing this, the Campanino Common. Um, and this is one of those times where I said, this is, this is it. We're gonna do it, but we can't do it anymore, but we keep going there. And we, as a city, we, and I'm not gonna put the entire,
Mm-hmm.
I'm not gonna put the entire, I wanna use quotes, blame, I'm not gonna put the entire blame on Samana Hispana, I'm not. We, as a city, with the groups, need to figure out, if we're not gonna do it on the common, where do we do it? And we may not be able to do a big thing.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we can't do the, maybe we gotta do two smaller events, where if that's the money that you need to bring in. This year's interesting, because you've received half of the money already. The city has already provided you money, half of it. So there's less stress, it gives us a little bit of time. But I just, I can't, I can't do this again and have this back on the common. This is back in 2018.
What's the month of that?
2018.
Month?
May.
Okay. Samana Hispana's in June, in my understanding, uh-uh, let me finish.
Go ahead, this is the first one.
Yeah, yeah, in my understanding is, that whenever that had happened, uh, I mean, whenever something has been brought up within the insurance and the machine, um, I understand that Mr. Flynn, and spoke in front of me to the mayor directly, said that if there were ever any damage, he'll pay for it. And he was always willing to pay for it, which he has never been reported any damage, but I'm just saying that.
As certain as the arrival of Samana Hispana Spring Carnival in the Campanino, every May, is the repair and cleanup that will follow, along with a debate of whether that event and others like it should be barred from the common because of the damage they do. That's the opening paragraph. So the first one, you may shift it around, it doesn't make a difference if it's May. That was Samana Hispana. Again, not looking to place blame, because what I wanna do, we need to work on finding what we need to do. I don't think we should be doing one on the common. It's a public place. We have spoken about, we've got laws on this. I, I pulled out the ordinances again today, just to take a look at it and make sure I was refreshed on it. And the laws haven't changed on the use of the common. Um, it's, it's our ordinance. But if we can find a place outside of that, so what I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna support going on here. I want to table, I wanna talk to Miva, on your behalf, on our behalf, to see what kind of option is there. Because, and, and, and maybe this is not gonna be 100% of what you want, but maybe it's 60% or 75% of what you want. But at least we are safeguarding the public trust that we have with this public place that we've already spent money, significant money on. And we could find a different place that could still be workable. And maybe we find a different, maybe do two of those things. And you find the money elsewhere, but fortunately this year, you just have, half of it, half of the load is off your shoulders. I'll stop there. My colleagues, uh, if I were to make a recommendation tonight to my colleagues, I would recommend that we table to have this conversation, and, and talk to Miva a little bit more about what's going on here and get a, a better sense. But I'm not, I can't make a motion, so I'll leave it to you as to how you wanna proceed.
Let me tell you something. I want to recommend that Samana Hispana, don't, eh, don't throw the, the towel, perseverance, and do whatever you have to do it, but do it. Don't let it, other decide for your purpose. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, motion to table, because I want to have the conversation with Miva, and then we come back. We have just a little bit of time.
Motion made by Council Vice Chair Reyes, seconded by Council Santiago. No discussion on table matters. I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
I did a second.
Pardon me?
Second.
He seconded. Did I say your name again? Let me try that again. You, you, you're not making it easy for me, Del Rosario. That's okay. As you say, that's a, motion made by Council Vice Chair Reyes, seconded by Council Del Rosario. Okay, just keep looking at you. I'll call the question again, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. The ayes have it, four, nothing to table. So we're gonna table this matter. I'm gonna get in touch, I happen to know at least one of these individuals, and I'm going to see if I can have a conversation and get more information, and we'll see if there's an opportunity. I don't wanna make promises, I don't have anybody's schedule, but I might invite them, and see if they say yes, we'll see what happens. Okay, we'll see if we can get to, we'll see if we can get a more permanent solution on this. That's gonna be good.
And when am I back here? I do have a meeting tomorrow for the beer. So everything stops.
Well, regarding the, well, yes. Well, regarding the, um, regarding the carnival, the answer's yes.
You can still get your permit, you can still get your permit for the beer, because you still have the festival.
No, if you're planning on changing the place, or the, the site, because they, they're not gonna issue two permits. Same thing happened last year.
Well, this is still in Ju- July, right?
Uh?
What month is this in? June?
June.
June 8th to the 16th. We're in April. And I realize April's almost over, but we have a little bit of time left. Um, a little bit of time left. The only thing I could offer my colleagues is if we want to table it and have another meeting next week, if you wanted to fast-track it, I would be open to that. If not, we can do it in the normal course after the next council meeting. So it's up to you how you wanna proceed.
And, and through you, Chair.
Yeah.
And we're not changing the location, we're gonna have a conversation and see if we have a second option, just in case. So I will go ahead
Okay.
and go with your permit, with the current location that you have.
I would just caution, there hasn't been, as far as using the common for the carnival?
No, I mean, she's, she's, she's looking for, I mean, she has a, she has a meeting tomorrow with, with, for whatever she's selling, right? It's beer.
Beer.
Yeah, because the-
If there's no machine, they can still sell the beer, whatever they, they have the permit at the festival, just in case.
Any tiny problem? If, that's, that's why I was here today in front of you guys, 'cause, uh, we need to change the plan. If there's not gonna be, um, the machines, none of the kiosks that we have are coming, because of what happened last year. So they didn't sell, I'll say, a tenth of what they usually do, because it's wanting, come, bring the people for the other thing. So then that's another problem for us, that they won't come. They already said it. So that's why we are trying to do this ahead of time, as you guys asked last year. But then it's tabled and tabled and tabled.
We've only, we, we moved on to the first, last week was the first, the last meeting is the first time we got it, and we moved on immediately. So it hasn't been tabled and tabled and tabled. It's this one, because we understand, let's, let's be honest with each other here. We know that the carnival rides have always been a contentious issue. Not the Fiesta, not the, not the other part of it, that's been very easy to get through every single time. But we know there's gonna be an issue, I don't, anyway, I'm not here, I, I, I don't wanna keep going on this fact, it's gonna sound like I'm gonna blame you. I don't wanna blame. I wanna find out a solution. So we're tabling it now, we're gonna try to work on a solution. I can't help you about tomorrow, we're not there yet, but we're gonna work as best we can, and you're in good faith.
Okay.
We're gonna move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think that's it for people that are here, so with that, we'll go to the top of the agenda. Document number 14125 is Lawrence Street. 333 Lawrence Street, 15-minute parking, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, put on by, I'm not gonna say Santiago, I'm gonna say Council Del Rosario. What do you wanna do?
Thank you through you, all the paperwork, it's on the file, I mean, the police already did the work.
Oh, yeah.
You guys did not wanna accept it as an emergency last time. So motion to send the full council a favorable recommendation to order, to order a public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Council Del Rosario, seconded by Vice Chair Reyes. Let me just take a look at it real quick again. Order of public hearing, right? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Next. 14525, this is interesting. Uh, Crafts for Alzheimer's, Howard Placehead, 5 to 8:00 PM, uh, baseball event, uh, 4:15. That happened last week. Looking for a motion to withdraw this one, because I think we're past that date. Motion to withdraw? Motion made by Council Del Rosario, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Santiago. Discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in, um, hold on for one second, hold on for one second. Howard Placehead Attorney Baseball, April 28th. Yeah, yeah, go right ahead.
I think, um, I was, there was a meeting that I went to yesterday, she said, um, that the Monday morning, I can leave you please for now?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
She forgot, pretty, I was, I wanted to see her last week, at the full council. I'm gonna reach out to her.
Well, there's nobody here either, which is, puts us in a very difficult position, and it's still the 15th. So what we're gonna do, we're gonna withdraw it, we're gonna send it up, I don't know, we're, we're not having a special city council meeting, I don't think, between now and April 28th, I, I don't suspect, I don't, I don't see that happening, so I think the prudent course of action is followed, but thank you for the information, that's helpful, we need to hear that. So I would go with this motion, just because we're not gonna be meeting, by the time we take a vote on this, it'll be May 6th. Motion's been made to withdraw, I believe it's been seconded, is that correct? It's been properly seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. 14725 handicap parking, at 111 Arlington Street, Counselor Del Rosario?
Motion to send the police department to review.
Second.
A motion made to police and DPW, has been made by Counselor Del Rosario, seconded by Vice Chair Reyes, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The next one is, uh, 14825 handicap parking at 65 to Experience Street, Vice Chair Reyes?
Uh, motion to send to police department?
Second.
Motion made, sent to DPW and Police Department. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Document 14825, uh, just that one, 14925 handicap parking at 124 X, Oxford Street, whose district is that? Does anybody know who that is? Oxford, it's not yours, is it? That's D, okay.
Oxford Street was exactly the chief.
Gotcha. Um, can someone do me a favor? Never mind, I see it here. Okay, well, this is interesting, this is interesting. Um, never mind.
What's it?
I, I, it's not worth me speaking on it, we wanna get home. Uh, is there a motion or a comment on this? Counselor Del, Santos Santiago. Del Santiago.
About the handicap parking, we got a many handicap parking at our, all tired city, and I would like to know, when you require for handicap parking, if you don't have license, why you do that? License driver, driver license, eh, is allowed to, to make the, the handicap parking? Because they are handicapped, because the doctors said that, but if you don't have license, driver license, you don't drive.
Do you, do you have an example of that? Is this one right here, where there's no license?
I'd like to require a driver license.
Through you, through you, Counsel, through you, Chair.
Counselor Del Rosario?
They are, they provide a handicap due to the illness, or whatever they have, regardless if they have a driver's license or not. And also, they need, they might have a driver's license, but they might have somebody to drive them up and down, and they need the spot, they need the place, to spot, also, there's handicapped hands, they go pick them up to bring them to, to the appointments and all that stuff, so, but, Dr. Fidelina Santiago, you know by the HIPAA law, you also cannot ask them any question, as soon as you said that you ill, they should just provide you, they don't ask you if you have a driver's license, they may check your doctor's papers, and they provide you the handicap, they're not gonna ask you anything else. It's against the law to ask too many questions, against the HIPAA law, and that's for doctors and hospitals and all that stuff, but you don't need to have a driver's license to have a handicap steer.
I, I ask the question, through you, eh, Chair, eh, because I heard the, the Board of Health, board, eh, one of them was, eh, tell, they cannot provide handicap parking if they don't have driver license, one of the Board of Health members.
Well, I, I, I can't, I can't speak to, I, I think, much of what our colleague said, I think I can, I can agree with, I, I, I don't, I can't speak to that, but having a loved one who lost their, is an elderly person, who lost their ability to drive, but still had a handicap parking placard, uh, when I needed to take that person to whatever, they could still park their car in front of their house, because they had a handicap parking, it was their car, and they had a handicap parking placard, even though they, they still have the license, the licensing is, but they weren't able to drive, is my point, because of a license, if you're elderly, sometimes you have a license, but you, 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 you can't use it for driving purposes, I think, um, so anyway, there are, I think my colleague said it very well, which is there, there are times where there, where you need and can have access to a space, without you, the principal person, having a license or driving a vehicle, someone else can use it, so, I can't, but I can't speak to your question, what the Board of Health said, and I, I don't know the answer.
Okay.
I just don't know. Um, but in this particular case, oh, we don't know if there's a license, but we do have a handicap parking placard, which is what we asked for, and we have that here for this individual, so it looks like, uh, it's gonna expire pretty soon, May 21st.
But my question is not for the constituent, my question come because, eh, many, many time, ha, came the same issue, or the same, or similar, that's the question.
Would you do us a favor? Can you give us more information on that, or if you, was this a member of the Board of Health that said this?
Bidal.
We need to invite Dr. Bidal, who's telling about these kinda comments.
I, we would invite them to come here, this is important to us to hear, I mean, and they were, because you're casting some doubt, right, and not in a bad way, you're asking questions, and I think it's good for us to have some confidence in, in that answer, is it important that they have a license? Is it not important? Do they need to have a license, or not? They're probably more versed in that law than we are, we're more generalist, they're a little more specific on these items, so I, can you talk to them, or whoever it is, and invite them to maybe come to one of our meetings? When we have a handicap parking, we can just bring them up and say, on this item right here, and we can just talk to them like that. Okay?
Yeah, because through you, through you, Chair, there's also kids with handicap placards, and parents need to drive them around, they will never get a license, so do we deny them? So it, 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 it'd be good to bring Bidal in, and find out, what was the actual conversation when it comes to that? I mean, did they found the person with the handicap driving without a license? Because that's, could be the, the conversation at that time, because going back, what would happen with all those kids that we provided, that they've been provided with the handicap placards, and the parents need to drive them around, and they still need a handicap parking, and, so, I mean, but it would be good to bring the doctors in, and find out.
If you can.
Yeah, if it's something that we don't know, I mean, the medical field, and it's part of the medical field, so the doctors should come in and, and line us.
And I think we're always open to learning, if there's something that we don't know, or we can learn more about it, and if you're bringing that to our attention, it's good, good for you, good for us, so if you wanna bring them in, I think we'd be better decision-makers, I think that's fantastic, so yeah.
Why not?
Okay, but thank you for bringing that up, that's a very good question, appreciate that. So where are we on this? Do we already have a vote on 124? Did we take a vote on that yet? Do we have a motion on it? No motion, looking for a motion on 124.
Motion to send the police department for review and DPW.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Del Rosario, seconded by Vice Chair Reyes, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. 15025, this one I usually take a little bit longer to look at.
That one have the driver, driver license.
How do you, oh, you mean bring it in? I don't, we typically don't ask for the driver's license, we just want the placard, we don't ask for this, this is unusual to get this, I think. Am I right?
The candidate wants to, to.
She offered that, right. I would, I would, I would, um.
You didn't authorize the petition, you didn't authorize the petition, you see on the bottom, has it already?
Yep.
Signed on it?
Well, she's, um, she's sending us information with the pains and penalties of perjury, so we have two options, if we are feeling pretty confident about this, we don't need to send a police department there, for their review, if we feel confident about this, we can send this up to the full council or a public hearing, counselors, I'm looking for your recommendation. Do you want to send the police there to double-check? Do you feel confident, and just go ahead and send it, send it to a public hearing? Looking for a motion. It's a 264 AM stream.
Send, uh, the full recommendation to full council.
To order a public hearing.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel, Vice Chair Reyes, seconded by Counselor Santiago, to send this to the full council with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. 15-minute parking, 101 Bradford Street, Counselor Del Rosario?
Motion to send the, uh, police department for review and DPW?
Second.
A motion sent to Vice Counselor Del Rosario, seconded by Vice, by Counselor Santiago, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, DPW and Police Department, got it. Uh, document number 15225, okay, a school bus drop-off and pickup at 65 Jackson Street, uh, between 7:00 and 5:00 PM. Typically, we would send this to DPW and Police Department for review, is that what we're doing here?
So.
Motion made by Counselor Santiago.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Del Rosario, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. 15325, discontinue.
Send the email?
Yeah, so we're gonna table it. Discontinue of Empire Street Alleyway between Appleton Street and Methuen Street, put on by Mr. McCarthy, looking, this is the one, he's looking for a motion to table, looking for a motion to table.
Send the table, the item 120, 15325.
Motion to table made by Counselor Santiago.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Reyes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. That is it, I think, for new business, well, we got, we got, we got stickies in that front, yep, let's take a look at those.
31024?
Yep. I find it is on page five, 310, oh, yes, now it comes back to me, 31024, uh, this is Saratoga Street One Way, put on by Counselor, uh, Counselor Luzon. Is there any objection? We'll just take this up now, seeing no objection, so we've got some new information on this, um, this is, um, a email from the DPW, uh, from Director Jaime, writing in support of the proposed change to convert Saratoga Street to a one-way. I believe this change will significantly enhance traffic flow, improve safety for both drivers and pedestrians, and help reduce congestion in the area. One-way designation aligns with broader efforts to improve neighborhood accessibility, ensures a more efficient and predictable traffic pattern. Department of Public Works fully supports this initiative, and appreciates the work being done to address these important infrastructures improvements. So that's number one. Police Department, uh, this is from Detective Jay Hegarty, I am submitting a memo, this memo responds to 31024, this requests us to convert Saratoga Street to a one-way street. The LPD recommendation this time is to refer the matter to the city engineer and DPW for a traffic study. As mentioned and referred to on 1201625, LPD will support the findings of the traffic study, and any research done to support a favorable or unfavorable recommendation by the city engineer and DPW. So, what is interesting about this, is that, um, police said, they don't have a problem, the city engineer and the traffic studies, then we don't have a problem, DPW says, we don't have a problem, but I didn't see any engineering report, but, um, but they're gonna go out and stick their heads out on this, and say this is, they fully support this, uh, based on traffic flow and, and improvement for safety and pedestrians. Counselors, this is all we have.
Motion to send the full council to order a public hearing?
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Del Rosario, seconded by, by Counselor Santiago, discussion? Seeing no discussion, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you, so that's order of public hearing. It's 310, one second. Anything else? Anything else? Do you want to introduce, um, yes? Counselors, we, uh, we have an introduction this evening, go ahead, if you don't mind, Maria.
Hi, um, introducing Angelique, she'll be, um, helping us with the minutes on the, for all the subcommittees, so she's in training right now.
Very good, thank you, and, um, welcome, yeah, we appreciate your willingness to serve in this capacity, it's been a very important job, I mean, it's, it's really under the, like, it's, people don't understand how important it is, but it's really important, so we appreciate your willingness to train on this, so thank you. Anything else? Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Counselor Santiago, seconded by Counselor Del Rosario, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. A little too deliberate for you? What? What happened?